Check, check, check. Good evening, everybody. We want to welcome everybody this evening to the board meeting. First, I want to say happy anniversary to Scott and Alicia, our treasure. Happy anniversary. It's a bad place to have to come, Scott, for your anniversary, but we appreciate you. Thank you all. And like I said, we want to just welcome everybody. Just to kind of give you some information, I guess, to start out, we will not be voting on the tax rate this evening. This is, uh, we want to go over some more information with you guys. Me and Mr. Reed and Mr. Lester has been meeting with the schools and I'm going to let Mr. Lester discuss that. Been able to work with them to make some strides. Also, I will let everybody know that I was able to meet with the governor, kind of express to him a little bit about what our rural areas are dealing with and what we're going through. Not just Russell County, but all the other surrounding counties. I talked to him about the regional jail and so I should know something by Monday or early Tuesday morning in regards to some assistance with that huge expense that the county has to endure. We're going to be meeting with the gov- uh, Governor again on a Zoom meeting and Secretary of Finance and Delegate Will Morfield, that's been very instrumental in trying to help the surrounding Coldfield region and the Coldfield counties with all of the expense. As everybody knows in this room, everything's been after us. And, you know, we really want to make sure that we can help everybody and if we can, if we can work with them to get some of this stuff done, that's going to make a tremendous difference. So y'all say a prayer when you pray and hopefully this, uh, will get some production from those two or that one especially, uh, issue that will help our county and not only just help Russell County, but the thirteen associated counties that are involved in that process. It's a very expensive process and I'll let the county administrator expand on that a little bit later on as he goes through this vegetarian process. So if everybody would stand, uh, we're going to go, we're going to have our invocation and then pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you tonight thanking you so much for all that you do for each and every one of us. We thank you so much for your son, Jesus Christ, that died for each of us. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity tonight that each of us could come out and be about your business. Lord, we ask that each and every one of us be attentive. Lord, that all of our actions be acceptable in your sight. And God, we thank you and praise you in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
If everybody would, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first on the, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Uh, if so, I need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for the agenda as presented.
Say it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hensley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we'll start the public hearing. See by, see why 2025 proposed tax rate public hearing. And we do have copies of the agenda and a sign-in sheet if you want to speak back there on the table. So make sure you put your name and information down and we'll, I'll take them one by one as you guys come up. Thank you. Mr. Lester?
You're breaking that paper too.
No, you're picking it up. Okay. We're going to start out with the citizens' comment period and wait I get a hold of the sheet and we'll start. And any, anybody that comes in late and if they do get here late and they do want to speak, we want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. So I'll, I'll make that announcement if people do get here a little bit later on. Make sure we don't miss anybody. Put these specs on. Okay, we have Doug Mays. Levins. Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Doug Mays, I live on 1183 Santa Cut Garden Drive, Lebanon, Virginia. And I'm here to speak about senior citizens. Sixty-seven and older. I think that their real estate taxes should be frozen at the age of sixty-seven. It's pretty hard to make ends meet between real estate taxes and, I don't know where they're at today. Power plant or that gets eight hundred dollar bill or whatever, power and stuff. I, I think that the presidential home people live in, our same family home, should be, should, uh, on the taxes there should be, should be going every year, should be giving us a break. I'm eighty-seven, eighty-six years old now and I had to pay for everything to get, get done around my house. And I, I, it's hard to make ends meet. So if you could vote on the, uh, to, you know, stop these payments from going at present on people sixty-seven and over on a residential home, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. We appreciate you. Okay, Angie McDonald.
Hi. Angie, welcome from Honecker. And I would like to talk to you about pretty much the same thing Mr. Mays did about the taxes and how high they are and how rough it makes it on senior citizens and disabled people. I never did worry a whole lot about taxes up until this year, but since Christmas, my husband has been in and out of hospital and it's kind of thrown me into wondering what's going to happen if something happens to him. Because even though we've worked our whole lives and paid for our house, there's no way I can afford outlets of power and, you know, other utilities and groceries and car payment and the insurance and taxes. So I just really would like for y'all to give us as much of a break as you can. I realize that it takes money to run the county and I'm really glad that you're working and trying to find every way possible to cut that especially senior citizens need the biggest break you can give them. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. And we will be in prayer for your husband. Okay, Mr. Larry Hughes.
My name's Larry Hughes. I live in thirty plate hall drive. I have property at two or three plate hall drive. I have some property here on Woody Russell Street right in town. Now it's a property on, uh, in, on the Cedar Road. I think I have standing in part of the citizenship here. I want to thank you, the board, for the work you do. You have a challenging job. I, I would not envy your job with child because I do thank you for what you're doing. I think we do need to take a little bit of things. I'd like to ask you a question. What, what tax base should we have? What rate do we need? How much taxes do we need to pay? Do we, do we have any idea how much we're paying? And what is the common sense approach on how much we should pay? Should we pay this is the dollar bill? Should we start paying five cents a dollar, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty cents? How much should we pay of each dollar? Does anyone know what, what you think? What should we pay of it all? What percentage should we be paying? Zero, what now? I don't think so. I think we're going to have to have some, we need to have taxes to do what? We got to have police, fire, first responders. We need a road sticker. We need, we need taxes, but how much do we need? That's my question. And I don't think we're managing our budgets well, we should be. That's my opinion. You know, reason me, I have to manage my budget, but let's talk about this. How much are we paying? Well, if I'm paying of a dollar, social security, if I'm seven point, I pay fifteen point seven percent. Let's just take fifteen, put this number down, fifteen percent of a dollar before touching. I'm paying, I've got state income tax, that's twelve to twelve to twenty-five percent. Let's take the low end, take twelve percent. So I've got fifteen percent and twelve percent. I haven't touched it yet. We pay federal income taxes probably twenty-four or twenty-five to forty-seven percent. Take the low end, twenty-five. So now we got fifteen, twelve and twenty-five and we pay state sales tax before I touch the dollar. That's about a half percent. Take five percent. And now, of course, you got the real estate tax here, which is six point three percent. Take half percent. Add those up. The only before I really touch anything is fifty-seven and a half percent of a dollar. That's the most I've looked at. Fifty-seven and a half cent of a dollar. So how much should I pay? Now, we still got to pay things such as, oh, we got to pay driver's license. But you pay a fee to the government's tax. Say what you want to us to pay. No, it's not. It's a tax. If I pay money, you give us a tax. We pay driver's license tags. We pay cigarette taxes, alcohol taxes, taxes on telephone bill, taxes on interest, I mean, taxes on your internet, your phone bill, your electric bill. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. How much are we paying of dollars? I won't stress we pay almost seventy cents of a dollar. I'll tell you what. I'll give you my income, you give me the taxes any day. I'll give you my income, I got, you just give the taxes I'm paying. I'll trade with you. Now, with that said, done, maybe we need to take a look at a few things. I don't think we need a tax rate. I'm in the mid-seventy. I'm on fixed income. Being on fixed income, social security, I don't, I, I think I got thirty cents. But then that charge reward for my Medicare because of that, so I probably lost money. My, my, my small, small income, my, my returning income, my, uh, fixed income with the company I work with. It's fixed. I don't get a yearly rate on that. I don't get a cost of living. So with a fixed income for the student citizen, well, if you're working, it's always a fixed income too. So my question, I'm paying taxes, you're paying the same thing. How much should we pay?
Larry, I'm sorry. In all respect, go ahead and finish that.
Okay. Quickly, if you can, we got, we got, again, a couple of things I want the board to consider. One is, how much should we increase? I don't want you to increase the taxes. We need to bring things under control. You know, recently, well, we need for every department to provide the board a detailed description of the request for money. If they cannot give you a detailed balanced budget, I don't think you need to give any raises to any of them. If that, you, you should be managing this money. I've got to manage my money. I don't get so much if I were spending, I'm in trouble. You have to manage what you got. And I don't think we need to be, you keep paying for the citizens, but importantly, we cannot pay. That's all I have to say. I want to thank you for it.
Thank you, Larry. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Horace Christian.
Believe me, if you didn't want him, Horace Christian, I live in Lebanon and I wanted to let you know that I hope you sure God don't raise the rate of these taxes. Last year, uh, we paid thirty-eight hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents. And this year, if you leave it at that, we'd be paying four thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-four cents because of this rate, the increase. Our store is up here in Lebanon. They're like one hundred dollars increasing the cess value, double the cess value. Like one hundred dollars now. Back, uh, years ago, eight years ago, I guess, they doubled the value of all my real estate property. They said I make money because of double value. I can't sell. I've been trying to sell for twenty-five years. I ain't sold the first lot, uh, first piece property, but commercially either or otherwise. So I'm hoping that y'all will consider lowering the rate. Uh, this cess value is not going to do anything to help it. My wife said, instead of raising the price, look like you appreciate it. Well, we talked to Terry and Terry said, well, it would take, we, they got this rate like it, it would take that to replace that house. Well, I thought, why are you worried about that? I don't know what y'all's feelings are and everything, but to me, it's really making it hard on the average John Doe. We own this up here seventeen and a half years and here we're having to consider paying that kind of rate and it should be depreciated, even though it hasn't in a sense. And I'm just hoping to consider the taxpayers. Everybody's got a wish list. Well, they should consider who's paying for that wish list. And we, the taxpayers, we're mostly the real estate, we're going to take care of that. But they won't take us into consideration too. Thank you.
Thank you, Horace. Okay, I'm going to try to make this sound, I apologize. I think it's, is it Bradley in Karen, huh?
Jordan is standing.
Oh, you're just sitting there. You're welcome to speak if you'd like. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, y'all. Is it Cody from Cleveland? I can't make up the name. Oh, I know Cody. Hey, Cody, sorry. I blew that. I'm sorry, Cody.
That's all right. I appreciate getting to talk before y'all. And I guess this is my first time before this board, so good to see you all here tonight. But, um, yeah, I kind of tend to write feedback.
I don't write good.
Um, I, yeah, that's the problem. So I'm, I'm a little, I'm going to wing it tonight more than what I've known. But I am here to talk about the, um, the taxes. We all know, probably everybody got a significant increase on their tax assessment. I'm not sure that every citizen in this county would have been savvy enough to know to sort of peel that and, and get that down. Thankfully, you know, we've tried to advocate with people that we know, tell them to do that, and hopefully that's helped some. I've heard, and then this may not be an accurate number, but I'm going to use it as my basis, if that's okay. I've heard the number forty percent is kind of a ballpark average of what most people were seeing on increase. Now, I don't have all the data that you guys might have to see what that actual number would be, but judging from my assessment, I'd say that's pretty, pretty close. And I do know some that, you know, getting north of fifty percent. It's a huge increase in taxes at a time when most of our citizens in this county are struggling to make ends meet with four years of severely high inflation. As you guys probably well know, me and my wife were just discussing today about budgeting our grocery bill and it's astronomical, considering, you know, we've got three small children that have not hit the teenage years yet. So I'm looking at that in the next few years, think that bill's about to get a lot worse. So, um, so certainly I want you guys to consider is to do what you can to get that rate down, not just down, uh, for a number that looks good. You know, I know that the current is sixty-three cents per one hundred, if that's right. And bringing that down may look good on paper, but if, if it ends up still being a tax increase for me and the rest of the county, then it's still raising taxes. So I just figured this out based on forty percent. So this is more of a model that I would ask you guys to go through with more accurate data and hopefully, hopefully you have Lonzo having the numbers. But if we use forty percent, if I've got a hundred thousand dollar assessed value and I use sixty-three cents per one hundred, that would be your current rate, and I'm going to end up paying six hundred and thirty dollars in taxes based on model value. If that increased by forty percent, then my new assessed value is a hundred and forty thousand. That's easy. Hundred and forty thousand dollars at sixty-three cents, uh, then it's going to come out to be about six, uh, well, it's going to be, it's going to be obviously astronomical to be higher. I think it comes out probably somewhere in the nine hundred dollar range. But if I go with forty-five cents, that's based on that average. If I go with forty-five cents times that, times that hundred and forty thousand, a hundred dollars per forty-five cents, then I come out at exactly six hundred and thirty dollars. So my taxes don't raise any. Now, obviously, that's an average. That won't be a perfect tax lateral for everybody, but I would ask that you do that. Look and see what your average increase on the assessment was. Get an accurate, actual number and then bring that tax rate down to where those numbers match. It's just simple math and we should be able to do it. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Cody. Well, actually, that's the last person on the list, but anybody else in the crowd that wants to speak? Just come up, give them your name and your address and anybody? Any takers? Sandy, come on up.
Uh, Sandy Head Sword Creek. First, I would like to apologize to the people that came tonight that thought that we were voting, that you all were voting on that tonight. That's what we felt. That's what was understood. So I appreciate everybody coming. You need to come back when they actually do vote on it. But no, I know what, we're going to hear Mr. Lester give us a very in-depth, detailed report of how bad things are. And I understand regional jails going to cost us, what, two hundred thousand dollars more or maybe? Electric bills for all the county offices, transportation, gas, everything. I know we're going to hear a lot of that tonight, but, and DSS, I know it's in the paper, that DSS, another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for DSS. That's because they have to turn that multiple times a year and ask for money for CSA for foster care. Okay? So if you fund us right in the beginning, maybe that won't happen. We never know how many foster care kids we're going to have. So, and we understand you all are not in an easy position for sure. I don't envy you. I don't envy you for anything that you've had to deal with the last two years. But you do have to realize where these people are coming from, where I'm coming from, where everybody's coming from. At DSS, we have seen more people come struggling with their electric bills than I've ever seen in the twenty years I've been there. I mean, it's outrageous and it's, people are choosing between keeping their electric on, buying their food and their medicine, and, and it's not right. And I know that you all have to do what you have to do. The county, I've heard, will never go back to the way it was a few years ago when you all first got, a couple of them first got elected and you were running on borrowed money. And I understand that. We understand that. But I still believe that with the revenue that comes into the county, even at fifty cents, that would still give a, a significant increase in county revenue. Fifty cents, fifty to fifty-five cents would be doable for most people. And I think there's stuff that can still be cut. I appreciate the board members that's cut everything they can. I think other ones can cut more. But I know the teachers deserve that one percent raise. They absolutely do. If that one percent raise is not worked into this budget, then the raise they got last year, closing my school in Sword Creek and, and Copper Creek was just a waste of time. Because if they don't keep those steps, then they're never going to catch up with the other county. So I believe whatever we can do, that the teachers raises have to work, have to be worked in. But there has to be a way. People are struggling. I mean, people are really struggling and I know that you all know that. But in my opinion, and that's an uneducated opinion, that's bad. But fifty cents, fifty to fifty-five cents, but sixty cents is not acceptable. It's just not, not acceptable.
Thank you. I seen a few more people come in. I don't want to miss anybody. I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. So if you want to speak for the board, come on up. We're over. It's, uh, just go ahead.
I'm JJ Eaton. I'm from Nashua's Ford. I sit on the school board here in Russell County. To echo some of the stuff that Sandy said, I do not envy any of you all. And I do know how hard it is for a lot of folks in our county with the, uh, with the power bills the AEP has put on us and just the cost of living. I mean, I just got groceries out here at Walmart last night and came out with ten bags and like three hundred dollars. So I understand that the, the cost of living went up and, and I am not for raising these taxes up sixty cents. I under, I understand that. And our people can't take it. But as far as the teachers go, we have six hundred plus employees in the school system. And, and thanks to you all and the school system for doing the cuts that they done last year, we was able to implement that step and that step is so important. That step was cut out almost fifteen to twenty years ago. And due to that being cut out, our teachers were stuck. That just stuck them exactly where they was at. There was no, there was no raise from year to year. When they could drive fifteen, twenty minutes to the next surrounding county and make ten thousand dollars more, we have closed that gap tremendously. Now, with that being said, we are asking for the continuation of that step program to be put back in this budget this year. The one percent we're asking for averages out to around two hundred thousand dollars. And the only reason we're asking for that extra one percent is the state sending down three. And we continue that step on top of that one percent. That would give us a, an extra boost, but we're still behind. People want to holler central office. We have less staff in our central office right now than we ever have. We've got less central office employees than surrounding counties, any surrounding county that you want to look at. When we look to our numbers, we are not overstaffed. We, uh, our classrooms are busting at the seams. And I would invite any of you all, and I have, and I thank everybody that has came with me to these schools and looked around, because you can attest by looking at these classrooms, at the, at the bare minimum, we're at eighteen to one student teacher ratio. Some of these classrooms are busting at the seams at twenty-three, twenty-four kids. Our three-year-old program, some classes, we had two and three aides in because we've got so many kids. So the lack of teachers, you know, it, I mean, we're not, we're not overstaffed by nobody. Now, that being said, this year, the teachers that are retiring, we're not hiring back. We've moved employees around. We've moved them from, from, well, for an example, uh, God's counselor position. They quit instead of hiring another one. We moved the one from the high school. Now we're taking care of the one elementary school and the Belfast Elementary School. They're splitting their time between each one. So we've, we've moved people like that around the whole county to try to make it work. We've consolidated bus routes, which has saved a lot of money. Unfortunately, we're having to cut out program and it's just due to low participation. That saved us money. We have cut and cut and cut. And I mean, I would invite any of you all, I know y'all emailed our superintendent and we've got back with you. You are more than welcome to come sit down with us. We will show you everything that we've done. But now I will continue to advocate for our teachers and our entire staff because when you invest in those employees that live in this county, that's who pays your taxes. That's who buys these groceries. That's who buys the gas in this county. That's who reinvests back to you all. So I look at the school system as an investment. If you give to that investment, you will get a return on your investment. They will spend back here. They will, they will keep, keep you all going. The more money you give them, the more money they're able to spend. So I encourage you all to, to look at this budget. I don't envy you all in any way, uh, but I, I do ask you, whatever you can do, to please work this in, this budget, so we can make this happen for our employees at the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, JJ. I seen a couple of more people come in. Does anybody else want to speak in the crowd? Anybody? Oh, we've got, there's Lynn and Jennifer. Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
I'd like to say, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I'd like to say I appreciate the job that you all do. And I hope Mr. Lester, whenever he does his presentation, will give us the number of how our county ended last year's surplus or a deficit to let us know exactly where we was at when we had sixty-three cents per hundred on our real estate. My numbers, the way I understand it, it's forty-seven cents per hundred now with the increased value of, I think it's averaged at forty-four percent is what I read. Somewhere that Mr. Lester had put out that forty-four percent was average of what was every home in the county went up. So if we drop it back down to forty-seven cents, that would put us about where, that we're at like we was at last year as far as the amount of taxes that we pay. Now, I personally don't expect you to do that. I know our county needs a, a little bit more money to operate on you and had a tax raise in several years, but over fifty is just going too far, in my opinion. I think three percent more than forty-seven would give you a surplus on your, on your budget. Would also help fund things. I don't see a whole lot of businesses, and y'all know more about than I do, busting down the door to get in here, but we've got shell buildings sitting around and they the door to get in here, but we've got shell buildings sitting around and they got nothing in them. So, let's try to just maintain our county and, and think about us. It's on fixed income, which I am. I'm a disabled coal miner. And I ask you to consider that, that we're, we're on a fixed income. It's hard to make ends meet from month to month. It really is with, with the prices of everything. Just thank you all for that. But anyway, wins meet to really look hard at this. The county has been prosperous, I think, for the last few years as far as the growth of it. And I'm talking about in good quality morals and standards in our county is what I'm talking about. So, take a look at everything that, that you can and try to keep these taxes down before the, us poor people can afford. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lynn. Jennifer?
Good evening, guys. I'll be quick. I don't envy your jobs at all in this, in this instance. I know, I know how this goes. I once stood before you and said I would be willing to pay higher taxes for no landfill. I'm still at that. And I, I know that we have people with fixed incomes, as been said, and I know it's gonna be hard and the price of everything has raised. And there's not a lot of choice, and your jobs are to preserve the county, no matter what. So, I don't envy you and I appreciate all the work y'all doing with this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate it. Alicia?
I'm Alicia Agathon from Honecker. And I see both sides of this. I work with the numbers every day. I see where you're at with your budgets. I see what the revenue comes in and I see the expenditures. I know nobody on this board wants to raise taxes. I know you don't. And that's not a goal of anybody's. Not a goal of mine or of others. But I would like to see us to be able to do more for our senior citizens and our disabled. I think if we could sit down and look at that program to see what we could do to help them, because I, like I said, I see the revenues and I see the expenditure side. But I also see the elderly and disabled come in my office and they have a hard time paying. And we try to set them up on payment plans, but that doesn't waive the penalty interest if they're late, so they still have to pay that. And, you know, it's, that's heartbreaking to see somebody come in. And we try to work with them every way we can, but I would like to see us to be able to look at that program and see if there's more that we can do for our senior citizens and our disabled people. And like I said, I appreciate all of you. I know you've got a hard job ahead of you, 'cause I see the numbers and I know what you're facing. But thank y'all.
Thank you, Alicia. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Alicia? Is it okay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm lost.
Maybe you don't, I don't have a microphone next to me. But I know that I've contacted you on several occasions and asked about the senior citizen discount. I don't know what you call it. What do, what do you call that?
That's what it is. It's senior citizen exemption.
And so, a lot of people don't know that. They can fill out a form. And I was just talking to some folks in my district just coming in the door. And I think that's lovely. And I think it's, I'm gonna say, $160 off your taxes. Is that correct? Is it $160 now? So, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, go right ahead.
But I personally would like to see that to go to at least $200. I don't know what...
And I think we need to look at the...
What's the number you're thinking? But I'm, I'm with you on that. And that's true.
Yeah. And I think we need to look at to see, like, the income, like, the income level needs to go up a little bit more, 'cause I think it's like $30,000 some thousand right now. So, I think that needs to be increased, too. There's things that we can do to look at that to try to help people.
I agree. Thank you for working that.
Alicia, if you could possibly kind of put, I know you, I talked to you about this, if what the other counties have done and how that's put together, if you could kind of send that out and email...
I'd be glad to get that out.
To the board for their, so they can look at it a little deeper.
I'll poll all of our surrounding counties to see what they have.
Well, thank you. And we appreciate that. I'm, I, I know that would be a, a very big help to our seniors and people that are disabled.
It would be. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. May me the time.
Is it income or is it net worth?
Both.
It's based on, I had on my mind it was net worth based, but it's...
No, it's supposed to be...
I suppose when there's the time when it's...
Yeah. It's supposed to be into the commissioner's office by March, the first to apply for the kind of, of tenure. But they do accept them up until the time that they, before they write, before they run the books. So, right now, they don't run the books. We can get a few more, you know, in there. But we can always back up. And if we, if you make adjustments to it, we can always back up and do abatements to people's taxes after that. If we change it after he gets the books run, we can always go back and correct some of that.
We'll probably take a look at that, run the numbers on it.
Yeah.
And get it down and see where, how that affects us. Okay. Thank you. Anybody? Anybody else in the crowd that would like to speak? I don't wanna, I don't want you to leave here unless you say, well, he didn't let me say anything. Anybody else? Okay. Come on up, Pastor.
Mike, I live in District 3. I was talking about back there. Is there any way you could get that fixed, the word, if you're 65 or disabled, they get that? There's probably a lot of people out there has no clue about that. Is there a way that the county could do it to where it'd be automatic? That you get 65? You don't have to come in. You just get it automatic, or if you're disabled, you get it automatic. I mean, there's probably hundreds of them in our county that has no clue that March the first, they have to do that. That it, it was an automatic thing, which I don't know if you do that or not. But if, if not, I mean, it'd be something to be able to get out to our community.
Absolutely.
And save those. I mean, we got direct pause. We got everything being automatic, automatic, automatic. And so, it looks like some of the breaks that we're getting ain't automatic. It'd just be, it'd just be good for them.
I agree with you totally. I think, once we get all the details of that kind of information, I think we're the only county probably in a lot of the areas that don't offer that assistance. You know what I'm saying? Mr. Down, I think it would be good to accumulate that data and information. I think it would automatically, if it was passed, I think it would, it would be in effect all the time. You know? I, I, I'll get clarity on that. Anybody else? Come on, Lynn.
Josh Burgess, Arch Pro, Cleveland, Virginia. I haven't spoke to y'all while. Been nice to have a break. Yeah, there's a lot of things that happened in my life since y'all, I spoke last. I don't get into that, but a lot of personal and other adventures. It's been all positive though. Thank y'all for what you do. I'm gonna say a few things that y'all already know, but just to put it straightforward. You got, you got three things here that could be a problem. And it takes all three for the county court. Takes all three for household work or, or business sake to work. You either, you have a revenue and you have a margin and you have your spending. And you've got a problem if it's not working out for you. They all have to work together or one can overcome them all. If you're, you have revenue. If you have, if your revenue stream is excellent and you're treating everybody good, business is good, your spending is not such a problem and your margin's not such a problem. Your margin comes in as your taxes. You wanna raise your taxes, so y'all need to raise your margin. That means you've got a problem. You either got a spending problem or you've got a revenue problem. Anybody can look to the county and tell, spending could be a problem. One thing that I realize is just sitting in this room, to break it down, we're actually sitting in a strip mall. Why does the government need a strip mall to conduct their business? How often is this area used and stuff like that? You know, the room's not full, but we could hold this thing in a barn and the people would still show up. It is very comfortable here and thank y'all for the accommodations, but is it necessary? You gotta look at what's necessary. As far as the revenue goes, I would kind of urge y'all to focus on the business that are here in the county already and try to help and coach and make connections if you can for those people. It's just like, you know, we show up here once, twice a year, we pay our taxes and sometimes we get a smile and a thank you. There has been some officers in this building that has went leaps and bounds, stepped down for me and done things and coached me and support and stuff. And I wanna thank them for that. But, you know, revenue, try to keep the business that you have in the county. And so, try to do businesses, please, if it, if it's a threat to anybody's health, environment, anything with that, water, air, pl- please do not go down that path. Because it will run the rest of us off. It will. And you'll have a short-lived business when all your anchor businesses give up. They're gonna leave. And I can speak on the taxes versus electric rates. This past month, I paid $5,200 AP. I was a small business. How long can, can we do that? So, you either got a revenue, spending, or your margins. And I, I would urge you, please stay working the margin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Just to inform my guests, the board, I didn't wanna get caught up in everything. I am, I am gonna ask the county administrator just to speak briefly on what we're trying to do. I know we're not gonna go through all the numbers tonight and everything. We did that the other night at the, at the meeting. But I will let you know that we are working hard to try to, on all the things that affect us also, to encourage them to lower those costs. Because it affects, it affects everybody. When everything around you, just like we've heard tonight from all the citizens, it's not just taxes. It's food, electric, it's everything that we've been pounded with. And I know the legislators have tried to bite into the power utility. We are meeting with different people to try to look at different options to, to that. Maybe to offer a, a competitive company or competitive nature in, into the area. I've had four meetings with them already. So, we're looking. It ain't, I mean, this board is actually looking for ways not only to cut. And I'll tell you, when we first got elected, it was a bad situation. We, we cut, cut, took over the garbage. We done everything that we could to pull us out of the rut of the deficit and get us into a good bond rating. And now, we're faced, we didn't have a clue. We go through COVID. We didn't know that. We didn't know it was gonna go through inflation. And now, we, we wasn't anticipating higher values for our homes. You know, we, we wasn't anticipating this. We didn't create it. But I'll tell you, we're committed to try to help every citizen in this county. I mean, I'm telling you that from, from my personal, me personally, and I'm telling you, we're, we're looking at everything. I think the governor actually knows now about what we're dealing with. Throughout my meeting with him the other day, and he's making phone calls to all the, the other departments that are inflating the cost. And if they've got any sort of reserve or anything like that, they need to, they need to balance their budgets. Like Josh just said, it has gotta come down to, to where that help comes to us because of everything that we're dealing with. And cost of things is out the road. But, Mr. Lester, would you take just a few minutes and kind of elaborate on what we're gonna do?
Be glad to, Chairman. Monday night when we had our budget meeting, you know, the ones that were there and the ones that wasn't there, or the ones that was listening out there, since Tuesday morning to now, you know, I, I think we've been living together since then. You know, I'm talking to the other departments. We've talked from everybody, from the governor to state agencies, to the feds, to make sure all this is locked in. What we was able to take a look at, and again, for the ones that, you know, wasn't there and just let this thing down, if I can see it. As, as we see here, and, and you were close in your analysis, Cody, it was the total average of real estate for single-family homes as we have gotten into these areas right here, including apartments and commercial and residential. And just in the housing residential, we're looking at a 36.21. That's, that's what, that was what we reported to the State of Virginia. That's after 2,966 reevaluations that we met during, from January the 14th to March the 14th, which is a long period of time. This is what the debt came out to be. Of course, as you, you can look, we had a 36% increase in housing. We had 20.01% in commercial, industrial, manufacturing, retail. And of course, into the agriculture line items that we reported to the State of Virginia, we had a 23.15. Now, in 2018, as you watch my cursor go down through here, this was our base and this is our land use. And our net came out at 1.334, which, again, we were running on 63 on 100. That base, based off of our revenue, get generated with, at gross, minus the liquidity at about $8,400. Now, by the code of Virginia, the board supervisors can have enough flexibility to be able to operate within 1% during a tax, you know, raise. And they can add, they can go ahead and put in, you know, 1% on a tax rate without a public hearing, which would be only about $84,000, which progress back down to, you know, 8,492 in base. Now, that is the 2018 real estate. That's what we were paying on. You can look at my budget and it'll say, you know, 81, 8,100,000 plus. It'll have the liquidity in it, too, which you do a 7% out. Now, into 2024, our, our properties went from 1.485 billion to 1.93 billion. That was a 468,200, 468,890, $22 increase, which was overall a 23.46% increase. Now, again, you have to take the 1.9 base, minus, of course, the land use. That's, that's part of the program. And then, come in with a net, net land value of 1.743 billion. Now, in that 4.3, to be able to get back to base, based off of what the board supervisors had already obligated in previous years, which is this year, to get back to that 8.4 billion base to this 4.8 billion base, which we're within $61 of, the net base tax rate would have been 48.23. Just to get back to the level ground of what we've done in 23, you know, 24 and 25. So, to get back to this, now, as we bring down the base, as y'all will see, here is the base rate level of 8.42. We've run down the numbers. Now, to get back to it, if the board supervisors right now tonight was to set 48.23 or whenever they reconvene, that would be the level where we're at sitting here today. Okay? Now, the problem in, in assessing, I don't think there's anybody in the county during the assessment that wants their house appraisal to go down. You, you want the rate to go down. You do not want your assessment to go down. Because it has certain advantages. One, and I'm not trying to convince on the rates, but you do want it if you sell it. Everybody wants always, always more. Second thing is your insurance. Third thing is the line of credit if you need it. You do not want your assessment to go down. What you want is the board supervisors to lower that rate back down to 48.23. That's, that's the magic number. And I can guarantee it. So, but the problem was, when we were sitting and running the budgets, other than what we were operating on, to get back down to the 48.23, we had a lot of external things that were approached with us. And you've heard them over and over, and if you hang, I'm going to repeat them. Regional jail, it came in at 560. They've got that bill and we have been working from the governor down with the legislators, Will Morfield, Travis, everybody to get this thing down to why, why are we paying $580,000 increase in one year? Here is the thing, is the way it is. There was three things that made that back $580,000 increase. First of all was, we had to pick up the, the labor cost of the state increase. That's in the contrast of all, all the jails. So, we do that every year. That was not the problem. Second problem was, the House and Senate in the State of Virginia... Second problem was, the House and Senate in the state of Virginia, the inmates were paying for their telephones, their internet, and they were cost sharing, $2 million at the regional jail. Now, the state is paying it, we're paying it. That's number two. Number three, number three is, number three is healthcare. Right now, they have a current contract that is $5.5 billion. And it's in their numbers. And what they're estimating it come out to be is 8.6 billion. So what is happening, we are picking up our cost share based off the number of inmates that we have, which runs around 120, is our cost share on an inmate basis on the level. And that's the bill they sent us, was $580,720. So that's what we're paying. That's the one. Now, the second one, of course, you know, say they had mentioned, I've got the foster care program, CSA program. You know, it's a mandatory program. That's not even contractual. That's a mandatory. By code of Virginia, if we will take care of the kids and you will pay it, or if they will take it out of your sales tax, it's either one way or another, you will pay for it. You can take it out of this line and do away with it tonight, and you will pay for it that same year because they will take it out. It's a mandatory service in the code of Virginia. Second, that next thing on here is the operational cost. That's just like what we was talking about there tonight. Now, what I've got in that line item is this, like everybody's in this room, we hate AP. I don't care if you're listening or not, it costs. And so between our insurance raising, our health insurance raising, our building cost raising, insurance, that is approximately about $195,000. And that is very conservative. And that's if, we've got, as you can see in the builds, we've put in monitors and computers to be able to monitor these controls. We shut them down when they're not here, same way with courthouses. Every bill we got, we try to keep them at a level, you know, controlled area, utilizing as less as we can. If you're not in here, the lights are off. So, next thing, again, this is going to, is the trash. It was disposal in the transfer station. Now, that line item was in the 200. We got it down to about 125. Now, that's contractual. That's through the regional waste authority. So that goes up in October. Again, it's contractual. It's based off the number of tons that we've run this year. I went at the base this year, so you know, if we hopefully do not exceed that base, that will be the increase in that, along with the cost of fuel and the rest of operations. So I got 125. Last that line item, I got five, which is the school board increase. Now, the board hasn't, some of the board has not seen this because we worked with them today. We just put these numbers together probably 30 minutes or 40 minutes before we come to this meeting. We, last meeting on Monday, that number was 1.15 billion. Now, what Dr. Hooker and the school board did, and what they're continuing to do, because these numbers are still evolving, they went through and looked at, they reduced their buses. They took out the buses. They have looked at cutting programs, not essential programs, but consolidating programs and doing what they could do with what they could internally. They have looked at their people that are retiring and they're not going to replace. They have looked at everything they can do in their line items to get it down to the 752, 930. This is the number that's here now. So with that in mind, our total increase in, that was before, has dropped down to 1.892. And I'll have this up on the internet. Y'all can look at it all you want. The board will be in their packet after a while, for a total of $10.295 million, which breaks down, we're at the 59, 59?
59.
Yeah, trying to figure out the bottom rate. So we're at 59 cents. We were at 60, I can, you know, this is what we do. But again, if you look at the two numbers that are here, regional jail and, you know, the schools, if we're going to continue on this path, these are my two biggest numbers. So it's all external. If we want to continue with the services that we got on these five, now, as you've heard, now, when we, this is the real estate budget, as I said before, as you can see right now, and this is the, this is a five-year analysis. This is what we had to do, you know, print and by law. The budget is around the 8.1, and along, if you kick into the liquidity, it's about 300,000 annually. That's that 8.14 million. Now, what we're looking at, and Mr. Eaton, like I said, and the board, we're trying right now, the, he's working with the regional jail board and the legislators to get that 600,000 down as much as possible. Can't make any promises, but I can tell you where we're at right now. School is still working and the regional jail is still working. So that's one of the reasons that the board supervisors did not want to set the rate tonight. Why would we, you know, we're going to have to get it down to the firm, hard, hard numbers because you're right, the electricity is going up, the medical insurance is going up. Can we, you know, how far can we push down towards the 48.23? To get it realistically, I have to pay for the electricity. I mean, I'm going to pay or they're going to collect the electricity out. I mean, there are certain things here that we're going to have to have number. But what is that number essential? I call it essential. People call it the magic number, or what is the cost to operate? What is the bare minimum that we can operate on? So even in our departments, and what I have proposed to the board supervisors, even in our department budgets, other than what is not under the constitutions, the courts, the sheriffs, I have got a 10% cut in other charges. So what I have done, I have went before the proposal of this budget, as you can see, and I have taken out line items for each budget, trying to pull in 10% off of each line item and each cut of each department, which totals out about $140,000. So I'm going to cut another 100 for you, and make all departments cut 10%. 10% on non-essential, you know, the employees, the benefits, not contractual because I can't cut those, those are contractual obligations. But the non-essential, non-contractual, a 10% cut through all 55 departments, which is about $140,000. So we're pushing with everything that we can and we're, everything's on the table. So that's it. In a, you know, a summary, but one of the things that, you know, the chairman of Istr didn't want to do is come in here where we've already been working with these two entities today, or in the rest of these entities, come in and set a rate. We're not done working yet. We're not done working yet. So to be fair, and I think Alicia's still here, I think we have until, you know, we got to get the books out. That's another part of the code. So we're pushing and saying, he's worked that. She knows when, we've got a limited amount of time to be able to work this. That's why we've been together all week long, to get to these numbers, to get them firm. So if we do that and we get the books, and the way that, and you can run the numbers, like I said, on the 36, I had the charts that it's up the other night on what the average house was here, because we looked at all 22,424 partials. We also screened 2,966 during the assessment to readjust them. The equalization board started yesterday and they're adjusting too. But what, if, some of the ones that's come through, and watch what we've got to worry about is, and where I'm going with this, is we have a housing shortage. We don't have a business shortage or agriculture shortage. If I take the 48.23 down on the housing loan, which will come out equal in a housing component, it will also start pushing down the business into a credit. And agriculture would actually get a tax break. And the burden of this will be on the homeowners. There's no way that you can, any, I don't care who you are, well, I don't care what you got a PhD in physics from MIT, try. You will not get to that number. So what we are trying to do is trying to work out these additional expenses to get it down to where that, this levels out, the business levels out, agriculture levels out, and we're able to give these additional services. And I think our 12, 15-hour days this week is, you know, that's why we've been working. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Well, so when would you hear about the insurance? When would y'all meet again about the county insurance?
Right now, in the county insurance into the numbers, like, as you'll see, as our trial balance on the proposed budgets, you know, everybody, I've got, the state of Virginia is giving 3% pay raise to all constitution and state employees, and that includes the school board, the SOQ positions. They pay for that. What, and I'm where I'm going, that's going a long way, Rebecca, apologize. As a match, I've got 40 full-time people, I've got 44 part-time people to give the 3%. That's what you see in the budget online. What it adds up to is 3%. But I also got to include, when you raise your salary, just like the state does, your FICA goes up and your VRS. So I've got to account for all of those intertwined numbers to come to a budget. Now, health insurance, I have 2% baked into this right now. Now, what we were told in the preliminary meetings two weeks ago, which Steve and David said some, they were going to go to five. And JJ, you still here? I don't, okay, I apologize. They were looking at raising five. What we explicitly told them, if you go to five, we're going to rebid. We cannot afford an additional 3% on top of what we've got to put back to the county employees, because even if you give a raise to the teachers, then we have to raise your insurance. We just said, repeated, completed, wasted all of this energy trying to get to this point. So that's another thing that we're dealing with. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
My pleasure.
All right, and Lika, also, with this proposed revenue, what tax rate did you base your figures on? Was that 63 cents that we currently have, or did you come down to 60 cents? Did you come down to 50%? What was your tax rate that you gave this proposed revenue on?
On this one? Well, it, it...
What guess did you give us?
Well, on the budget here, this is that, this one right here is at 63 on 100. It doesn't matter what you use. It's, when the assessment goes up, it goes back to my base. And if I go back to 48.23 based off the 1.933 billion, it still goes back to the 8.4 billion. So I've got, I've got, what we have done into this, in this proposal right here, we've got to keep that because the board of, the board supervisors has already obligated this through employees, schools, contracts. I have to keep the minimum base of revenue. So that keeps it in the base ranks. The 48.23, as you can see on this analysis, it equals, if you push based off the new assessment, it equals the 63 cents. You get back to base. Like I said, you don't want the assessment to go down on your houses because it's worth 1.93 billion dollars right now. Russell County picked up 468 billion, million dollars, not billion, I wish it was billion. 468 million dollars in assessment. You do not want to be a county that goes into poverty. Your housing, you don't want your housing cost. During the assessment, and I might start telling stories or get off track, we had one individual came and they had a proposal yesterday, and he had, he had his house and it was $239,000. And so, as on the joke, what we're sitting there doing, we were $100 off between assessments. So we, you know, one of the people in the office says, I'll give you $239 for it now. And he said, no, I'll take 320. I'm going, wait a minute. So you're saying, he sat there with us for 15, 20 minutes. And I don't mean to get off track, but the point is, you do not want to, you do not want your house to go down, guys. You want our rate to go down, but we're fighting the external things that cost that goes up. We, we don't, we, we're fighting regional jails and governments. I mean, these things are external to the county. There's not one employee, additional employee into this budget. There's not one car, not, nothing extra. These are all external to us. So, yeah. I only threw you under the bus while he was gone about three times.
As you said, we are working on this, you know, not in date. With that being said, I was just on the phone with Dr. Hooker. And as bad as the school system and the teachers, that 1% raise was only additional to the teachers. Came out to $243,000, I think to be exact. Is that correct, Lonzo?
Yeah, we were at 44, 520.
Okay, 244. We are willing right now to discuss this in open forum. We want a commitment, though. We will cut that out so we don't have to raise taxes. If that, if that percentage would help on this assessment. We will wait on the 1%, which was $244,000. But we need the step to stay in. The step has to stay in. I mean, we can't go backwards. The step is something that, you know, closing those schools was some of the hardest things that we had to go through. Do not want to go through that again. But the reason we've done that is so we can get this pay up where it needs to be. But we can't go backwards. If we keep the step going and make that happen, that still is a big bonus to these teachers. Now, the 3% the state is sending down, I know it specifies our SOQ employees, but we have never just given just to the teachers when the state comes down. We will give that across the board. We will give that to our support staff, our aides, we'll give that to our custodian, custodian, excuse me. We'll give that to, across the board, bus drivers, everybody, across the board, we'll get that 3% from the state. But the step has to stay in. Now, I know there's some companies that are looking to coming in, and I know you all have worked great with trying to bring business here, and I appreciate that. I'm hoping if that happens, we can come back to the table and make that 1% and maybe even 2% happen. If we can do that, that would be great. But we are willing, I mean, like we said, we're all in this together. I mean, we don't, we're not trying to put a burden, the school system is not trying to put a burden on the taxpayers. We're trying to fight for our employees that has been left behind for so many years. And it's sad that we're in the situation that we're in, that, you know, where we're at could have been fixed 20 years ago, and why it wasn't, I don't know. Okay? But we are in this situation, but if that helps?
It does. It takes it down to 48.
Okay, well, that's what we'll do.
Now, the regional jail is your biggest one.
If there's anything, I mean, if y'all have any questions, I mean, I'm willing to...
Are you giving the custodians cooks?
3%.
Aides, bus?
3%.
Stay up, stay up.
Well, the step is in for the teachers.
Stay up, I used to give, I used to give.
Yeah, they did. And that's something, that's something we want to put in. I agree with you 100%. That is something that we want to put in. But right now...
You have to amend it.
Yeah, you, if you put the step in for all 600-plus employees, we'd be asking for $3 million instead of 4. So that is, right now, as far as economics go, we know we can't do that. I mean, that's something we'd like to do. But as far as our teachers goes, guys, we've been able to retain, we put out for, we put out for a vacancy in a job right now. We get 30 applications. Couple of years ago, we got zero. Zero applications. And if we did hire somebody, if somebody, nobody else, and I hate to say that, but it was scraping the bottom of the barrel. And that's to put it in probably pretty harsh terms, but that's just the truth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Yes, go ahead.
Real quick. Our teachers deserve every penny that we can spare them.
Absolutely.
The issue that we're up against is getting more and more, it's going to cost more and more to the taxpayer, and the amount that we're having raise taxes will continue to climb. To your point, if we land some of these potential businesses that are looking very good, we can cut taxes and give raises. The future looks great.
And that's the reason why I've been trying to work with you.
But right now...
Y'all be praying.
Right now, we're in a tight spot.
Outstanding.
And we talked about this the other night, at the end of that meeting. And we talked about this the other night, that we, uh, if we can just do what we can do, get through.
Well, this is something that we're willing-
We can make, we can make something big that-
And this is something that we're willing to wait on. And, I mean, they need it, and you're exactly right, our employees, they are behind it. And, and I don't want to hear nobody say, "Well, our central office, they make top dollar." Look at our central office compared to other central offices. We're still behind there. We're behind, our principals are thirty thousand dollars behind, just across the, just across the, the border up here. I mean, we're behind across the whole board.
I'm, I'm really, you know, I really, uh, respect Dr. Hooker and you and what all y'all have done. So she's come on board and, and the new-
She's, she's done great.
Done a fantastic job. Some of you probably don't know, my mom was a teacher at Lebanon High School. My mother-in-law was a teacher at Lebanon High School. And they, they retired before all the, you know, good raises and stuff happened. So I, I remember nice when I was standing up in my group papers. I know it's, I've seen it firsthand. I know it's how they never they put in it. That's why I say they deserve every penny we give, we just don't have any pennies right now.
That's right. And, and to your point, those teachers that we still have now that are over twenty years, those are the ones that suffered from that step being taken out so many years ago. They're, they're going to have to retire at such a lower rate than what they should be. But we, we, the step, the way, the way it worked is, you know, we had to raise our starting pay. We was at like thirty-six thousand dollars, we're at forty-two. We implemented this step, we're at forty-three, which is still a little bit behind the other counties, but I mean, we're catching up. We, we give the majority of the step to that one through five, five through ten, and it, and it tapered off up in the, you know, just thirty years. Uh, I mean, those people need it just as bad as the-
To your point, the way this competitive, where we bring teachers in, where people-
Well, we had to stop teaching, we've got to continue to do that.
Teachers are leaving, now they're, now they're applying, so it's good, man.
But I appreciate you guys, and I mean, like I said, we've got to work together.
Well, thank you for that, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I want to say thank you to JJ here, but, uh-
Come on, Dave.
One, one more thing, a little bit of a joke for you, JJ. You cut six-hundred thousand dollars out of this line out in four days, I'm going to give you four more days to finish cutting six-hundred.
No, I just want to say also, I don't envy none of you guys. I was going to speak there right then and, and, and talk and, uh, but I don't envy you guys, uh, appreciate everything that you do. But this one, maybe Lonzo elaborated, did have a conversation, I thought was going to be a fifteen-minute conversation with Peanut, and Lonzo happened to be in the room, and we ended up on a conference call for an hour and a half, and, and I got to hear some of this a few weeks ago. Just wish Lon, Lonzo, and he might have a man missed to elaborate a little bit more about that he hadn't seen happen with the residential versus agricultural business and all the years that he'd been here, and the difference in the assessment, to get a little better understanding on that. Uh, also, I'd say, I know that, to be honest, I, I was really disappointed. I almost wanted to get up and say, evidently our citizens ain't hurting too bad, because I would have figured this room would have been full tonight. I mean, I'll be honest on that. I mean, and, and I say that, I know they are, but I, I was really disappointed. I figured this room would be full of people tonight, with a lot of concern. Uh, obviously, it's concerning to everybody, and you don't want to have to see these things happen. And, uh, hopefully, you guys will be able to continue to work. But I've also been involved, worked with the county a long time, and I've seen the years that we kicked the can down the road and got ourselves in a mess on the health insurance, and then had to come back to our teachers and citizens and say, it's a lot easier to say something's going up on you fifty dollars a month one year versus had to come to them, have made the same way up on you two or three hundred dollars that year, I can't remember what the numbers was. So I, I get it, we can't kick the can down the road. And then the other thing is, uh, elaborating a little bit, I know we also discussed, we've really not seen the revenue of maybe what Siemens, um, uh, tape and some of those industries, what tax revenue, I guess it's sort of, uh, we're just in a limbo there, we've not seen that revenue come in, so we don't know what that is correctly, am I correct in saying that? So hopefully, you'll, you know, we can see more from that. And just to be honest, and I mean, it's not being like this, David, and this is something that, that we supported and sit with this board a lot, and a lot against, in a lot of meetings, that we wanted to see transparency. And I'll be honest, I think tonight, and I appreciate the chairman for allowing, even for me, quite, you know, maybe a year or two ago, you said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, citizen comment's done over." I appreciate you letting me come back up here after you'd sort of shut that down. Um, because I think this sort of town hall, like I said, you can interact and with the people sitting here tonight, I think is a good thing. And, uh, I appreciate you still allowing people, maybe they're somebody else, after Lonzo spoke, that wants to say something. But my prayers are with you, that we say we get this worked out.
Thank you.
Uh, for the best of our citizens. And the same, I work in the school system a lot, I've got family that works in the school system. I see how they struggle, uh, you know, uh, two, two, maybe a, a wife and a husband both work in the school system. I see them though, how they struggle to make what they've made. So I, I'm definitely on board and I'd say it's one that's in anything against their teachers or, or our staff, so, uh, but I appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much. Anybody, come on up, Dave.
I mentioned earlier, probably, this is one of the things that I've been talking to some of y'all individually about, that, uh, the money of the county is, are, are we certain, do we know, are we collecting all the money that we're supposed to collect? With regard to properties, and I had a meeting with Lonzo a few weeks ago, it seems like we may be ten percent short on the amount of acres that's in the county versus the amount of acres we should be collecting acre property taxes on. And, uh, so those things like that come up, and, and I know, and, and I agree with Philip, I don't, I don't think I'm on any of your positions, but, you know, when we find something like that, we need to probably identify what we need to do to fix that quickly. And then if you think about, let's say it's, let's say that number's, whatever number it was, but it's been going on for per two. So we've missed out on revenue from the county standpoint, maybe half of what JJ was asking for, that's, that we should have got in revenue in the last year that we didn't. So, I mean, what are we going, you know, can we work together to figure out a way to, how do we identify it? You know, we, you know, we, we sat together, we identified, now what, what are we going to do? I mean, when, when we're short thirty, forty thousand acres on what should be taxed versus what's being taxed? I mean, to me, I mean, being in the corporate world, and I was in corporate world for a long time, we would go, we would have a day like this and do what you guys were doing. We called Zero Bays Buses. We went line by line by line. I saw our CEO one day asking somebody, "What's that twenty-five dollars we're paying for?" And they had to come back and explain the twenty-five dollars sold, and we took out the buse. But my point is, when we, when we identify something like that, what are we going to do to fix it? And to fix, but it really needs to be fixed before the next tax tickets go out, because, you know, how much money, how much revenue are we losing? We may not, we may not have as big a gap as we think. And that's, you know, I've talked, I've talked to a lot of you individually, but what are we going to do about it? And how do we fix it? You know, and, 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 sometimes we, we see things and we see things happen, but sometimes it's hard to get that ball moving. And I won't harp on the PSA as an example, but it's hard to get that ball moving to get something fixed. And so, now we've identified it, you know, and I'd be glad to be with any of you individually or collectively or, or whatever, and go through what I went through with, with Lonzo, those guys, but, you know, I don't want to come behind those. You, you probably talked about assessments and all those things, but, you know, lowering the rate a little bit right now is not going to help people if their assessment is seventy-five, eighty percent, you know, but, but so if we can find money, the point is, if we can find money that we should be getting anyway, shouldn't we be really laser focused on that and, and get that moving? And I just want to make it public, you know, what, what, if I can do something to help, because we need to, if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, the last ten years, do the math, it's a million dollars, and we should have gotten it.
I agree. I've talked to you about this quite frequently. And I think we're going to have to really work on that, be aggressive with that.
David, I agree with you a hundred percent. We've got to, you know, we've talked about it, Lonzo, that, you know, as soon as we get through this budget. And, and that's not to say we can't go back.
We can only go back three years from now, I guess.
Well, it's not to say we can't go back.
Has your commissioner and the assessor looked into this, because that's kind of what they do? Did you, did you talk to them about it?
Right now, based on what, elaborate a little bit more what Dave is talking about, uh, these, these acres are missing, or also, you can speak in with us. Land that's tied in to reclamation and nature conservancy, we're trying to get our bases again, a base, and get these meets and bounds done to be able to go in to define. Some of the lines have got skewed over the years, and we've got cherry trees as benchmarks, and the cherry tree's no longer there, the river's no longer there. So what, what will be the fix is, based off the meets and bounds that we have within the four-hundred-and-seventy-seven square miles that we have, and Dave's done an excellent job of, of researching between the state records and our records and the GIS is in looking and identifying those tracks and lines that is, is a little skewed. We should be able to go back, when we do the shape files and overlay these, and, and we're going to be looking at a contract to be able to come in and identify those. So, I thought about it while we were sitting there, and I said, "Yeah, it'd be great for the county, but, you know, if I come in and tell somebody else, you know, the property owner, guess what? You've got four more acres than what we got on the books for, so..." But we've got to get it fixed, is the point, you know? And, and it's in that acreage that's, that's, that's not defined, you know? If you ask us, I said, now turn to Southern Vision, yours is defined per your plat, it is where it is. And this is out there, don't miss anything, David, that we've got, and it's into the also the mineral and gas, so.
It is a little bit of the mapping problem, but the majority of it is where somebody owns the surface and code. They're only getting the tax ticket for the coal and not service. The state, the state code requires, I mean, it's like, that's what the biggest offenders are. I found one, one parcel that was over three thousand acres, they have a mineral tax ticket, but they don't have a service tax ticket.
That is correct.
And they're supposed to have both. So, they're, they're, for lack of a better term, they've been getting a free ride for years, but because they own both, and they're just getting one tax ticket. Now, if you pull that tax ticket, it has the surface assessment on there, but they're not getting taxed.
Even our, our whole mapping system, a lot of those tracks, it depends on, if you have survey meets and bounds are good, you can insert it in there, but those meets and bounds, they're different by where it's at. But some of those have been best fit on there by, you, you've seen the old surveys on how loose they were.
I understand that, but it's still not a mapping issue. There may be a land guard there now that says three hundred acres surface, three hundred acres mineral, but they don't even take that. That's the majority of it.
That's another problem. But I've, I've seen tracks, I know where they're located, and they're, and this way, you know, mapping.
And that's, that's true too, we need to, that needs to be addressed. But the biggest problem is, is there is a tax ticket, but they're only being taxed for one estate. That's not a mapping issue, that's more of an administrative, that's a fixed issue.
Well, Lester, is there a way, is there a way that we can, let's take it as two separate, two separate issues, you're right. One's a mapping issue, that's going to take a little time to work out. The taxation issues, it's something that we need to take action on. And if someone, is there, is there any way we can go through and see, identify these properties that have a surface and a mineral tax, and identify if they're paying on both of the taxes?
Well, what, what Mr. Miller was going to tell you, it's kind of the re-intertwined, tells, you know, from the assessment, you, you've got to know what you're taxing. You can't just arbitrarily go ahead and say surface and this, and, you know, if they're being taxed at the gas and oil. Gas and oil, yeah. And now the surface is, what is that, is that piece of property well-defined? You can't just arbitrarily go, okay, that, that will apply to the surface and what it is. Am I misspeaking, you know? Some of the ones that we found, you know, are they combined in aggregate? You know, are they surface combined with the oil and gas, is that how they're billing? And then on the tracks, and each one of the tracks has to be defined too, to make sure that that is applicable to thirty acres that we're billing them for.
If, if defining the acreage is the issue, it sounds like we've got an issue with the whole county.
Not, not, no, 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 no.
I can point to the whole right now that are getting taxed on their properties, but they're not finding revenue.
What, what the, the, the attitude of what Mr. Lester talked about is, is you can higrade and say, okay, and I could give you tracks to higrade, right? And say, okay, here's a thousand acres of mineral, and we can look at the land guard, that's also a thousand acres of surface. And so you could, you could probably wipe out a percentage of it by just looking at the land guards and saying, okay, the land guard already has it on there, it's just not being taxed. And you can look, so you could pull all the mineral land guards and say, does it have surface on it as well? Say, okay, that's good.
So let me start there. If, if you've got, if you've got that list, and you know whatever you know, if you know five tracks, Monday morning, those five tracks may be getting a tax ticket, you know, the past three years, they ain't been made taxes. That's gone since.
I mean, it's more than it's for, we need to get, I mean, it's, that's slipped from the rest of the tax bill, is what that is. Yeah, that's why I'm going to break that, and that's the reason I asked.
I mean, I buy, I buy your breakfast to come in your money, and-
I've done a lot of pretty good jobs. I've already out pretty good jobs.
That's, that's why when I was starting talking about taxes coming up, and I got my three assessments, and I brought my deeds to the hearing that are, I bought them probably for a lot less recently, for a lot less than the assessment you have, I started asking the questions, how many acres does the county have? And how many acres are being taxed? So, I put all that together, because that is what we do. And, uh, so I just want to make sure everybody's paid before mine goes up.
And then these coal companies probably, they, they had influence there fifty years now. They could have had somebody come in here and just tore up the land, took it for anything.
No, I don't think that's how I worked for a coal company, if they might be.
Well, I, I work on a lot of coal companies too.
I'm not saying that. And I manage land for coal companies, and I never did that. So, but, uh, there's just a mistake, it's been an oversight, and we brought, you know, it's, it's been an oversight, I'm just trying to bring attention, let's get it fixed.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is let's not let the, the gravity of the entire problem stand in our way of fixing the things we can fix, and work on the things we can fix right now.
This is a quick comment I used to tell, we mapped over four million acres when I worked for Santa Casta. Quick comment, it's like eating elk. You have to eat him one bite at a time, somebody starts at the head, somebody starts at the tail of the elk, and has to eat it. So that's-
Mr. Miller, I want to thank you so much for all the work you've done in our conversation.
Excellent.
This guy right here is a sharp cookie.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Dave, so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, yes. I think we need to jump a mile. Push it, there you go.
On?
Yeah.
So, uh, many years ago, when several of us just got here, Ms. Diwas, Rebecca Di was in the front end of all of us, uh, we ran upon this issue, and we discussed this probably about in late sixteen, maybe seventeen, that the GIS was not correct, we had problems, but we also had financial woes that we were trying to work through also, because this is an expensive endeavor, I do believe. And so, uh, we, we have talked about this. In fact, that's about the time that we let the first level of the GIS go to the public, so that our real estate folks and everything could look at that now. Mr. Miller and I have had conversations, and yes, we understand each other, there are black holes. Coal country is difficult at best. And these are just the issues that we need to work through, because normally, when they're running good and running right, as we say, uh, planning was good, and it didn't matter if they were paying the service or the underground or whatever. But we're in a position today where we need to reassess everything, and I thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, and I'd be glad, just to follow on what Ms. Wallace said, I'd be glad to get with, you know, commissioner revenue and the assessor, because that's, you know, they're our umbrella. Well, we'll take a look at that.
That's excellent, I think.
One, one of my recommendations, and I'll tell the board, I've talked to Mr. Miller numerous times, and I did call you back, Dave, believe your voicemail. I talk to him a lot on the phone, but, uh, I had talked to Dave, and Dave, uh, Mr. Miller had made a recommendation to bring in an independent type person, that this is all they focused on, even if we had to pay them percentages of- to bring in an independent type person, that this is all they focused on, even if we had to pay them percentages of the money they found and, and, and the process, so I'm open to anything, I think this has got to be addressed. We, we don't have an alternative, we've got to look at this deeply and we gotta address it. I've talked to Dave about it, I actually said, Dave, why don't you just come on board with us? And he said, well, I got a full-time job and, you know, I said, well, I understand how that works too, so. I do give Mr. Miller kudos for what he's been able to do and, and the work he's been able to put in this on his own time and his own dollar. He, he didn't expect anything in return, he, he really dug into this for us as a county to actually help us. And it don't hurt us, it helps us, so I agree with the full board, this has got to be expedited and we need to, we need to work on this as quick as. We, we have, we have introduced a new software plan, you know, that, that we've accessed and we actually accessed and gave it to the public at no fee, it used to be a fee you had to pay to access it, so we have gave that to the, to the citizens of the county. It needs a lot of work, it needs, and it ain't just Russell County, I'm telling you, we have these conversations with all other counties too, and that, they're just amazed by what Mr. Miller brought to my attention, and then I had a meeting set up with him and county administrator to identify and look through this information deeply. To see how we need to go to the next level to address it and work on it, so. Is there anybody else in here that, I don't, I don't believe anybody else, I mean, is anybody, anybody else want to say anything? Okay.
Just may I, do we, do we have any prediction timeframe and knowing when we're supposed to be ramping up the new business of the company?
Uh, Lonzo, do you know any predict time on Tate and Simmons? Like, it usually takes, I, I'm gonna guess about a year before we actually see a lot of return on investment, is that not right?
Yeah, we're, Ms. Wallace said we're in a hunting period right now.
And then, then Lonzo elaborate a little bit on that, about the.
Yeah, elaborate a little bit on the, the difference between the real, the commercial and the. Is that what you was talking about?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Well, you was, well, we popped there a few weeks ago, and you was explaining that you had, you had claimed that happened.
Oh, it's been twenty years. The difference in the percentages, right? Some of the, some like commercials, okay, wait, I'll be, I'll be glad to elaborate.
Go ahead.
Okay, like I said, on the families, they went at thirty-six, but one of the things you've got to understand, you know, yeah, we're coal county, but we're agriculture county. You don't want to hurt your farmers, so we, we've been going at this at a tenth of a percent amount at a time to try to get to these numbers to where we don't hurt our businesses that are here, because we want them to stay here, we do not want to overtax them either. Nor is our, our farms, especially our producing farms, and to be able to get them down to the level base, but not put the burden of a tax raise on the, the houses. One of the, when we was talking to the consultants with State of Virginia, and this guy, he works with the Department of Tax, he is the head assessor for the state of Virginia, and he, he actually walks with the main consultants with Amazon and the rest, he does data centers and the rest, and that's all his job is, he's the head assessor. He said, Lonzo, he said, when I pull up your sales data and your ratios and we look at what assessments y'all got, you, you're doing, you're running plod rate, what you've got coming in is going to do well. I said, yeah, but I need it now, this is a problem. See, I got a calendar year tax base and that's not going to kick in, because they're just coming in and we're working on other projects that we can't elaborate on tonight. When these get in next year, it's going to be, we'll be in better financial condition, he says. He, he worked on the Virginia Economic Development Program, so he's tied in with them, so he knows what's coming into Russell County. But until then, how do we get there and not hurt the citizens, not hurt the businesses, not hurt the agriculture, and keep the services at what the citizens want? That, it's, it's Lonzo.
I think what his question is, is the comparisons we gave to him was the difference between residential and commercial, the, the percent wise, as far as like, how much the commercial, like business tax is a lot lower than the residential.
An increase per class.
That increase per class is what he's asking, yeah.
I mean, you've explained it, me and Mike got here, I had talked to.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of figures and variances in here.
The people in here better understand, because we didn't understand, but we heard him speak about the differences, such a broad spectrum between the agricultural.
Hey Liz, you want to come up, come up so everybody can hear you, you sure?
Why I said it to me.
What I'm saying is the assessment value for commercial went down, assessment value for agriculture went down, but the assessment for residential homes we had.
That is correct.
And you just saying that you hadn't seen that, I haven't.
I haven't never seen it either. Now, when you look at the agriculture, we went through all twenty-two thousand four, and I apologize, because we're hearing humming up here and, and everything going on. When you look at, when you look at the agriculture, and you can pull the tickets out, like I said, the twenty-two thousand.
What is, the people online can hear, you know, we want, we want everybody in the county to understand and know what your all those questions are and stuff, that's the reason I was just trying to be polite and get you to come in. Yeah, so when we looked at the agriculture, and the majority of the ones that we pulled out between the fifty and sixty classes, there's no shortage of agricultural land or farmland. Again, there's a shortage of housing, there's not a shortage of business, so when we pulled the tax tickets, the, the increase overall, and it came in at the big, big farms, this twenty-three percent is, is coming in, as you look at the numbers, is normally around the twenty to the hundred acres, that's where you see it, but that's at fifteen percent. Over a hundred acres is where the thunder's coming in, you see it as, as you're looking here. But a lot of the mom and pops farms, they stayed within five to six percent, three percent of an increase. They did, they finally did move, and, and we're going, okay, that's land, it's not a structure, you don't have a structure on it, it is land, but it's not producing like these big acreage, big acreage farms, store land and cattle, I'll use it as an example, you know? As, as same way with the commercial, the, you know, the mom and pops that were in home acre and the ones that were in Cleveland or, or St. Paul wasn't coming in as hot as the ones, well, I mean, the hot, as increases like the town of Lebanon. You know, the businesses were concentrated. So when we looked at these, these tickets with a twenty percent increase in businesses, it wasn't equally dispersed with, between the businesses and equally dispersed between the farms, it was picking up the big farms, it was picking up the big businesses. So when you take that rate and you push it in, same way with the houses, I got, I got subdivisions, some of them went up fifty to sixty percent in the subdivision, because they can sell fast, I mean, they are selling within three to five to seven days. They're, they're, one just behind the house, we're selling houses in this county at seven hundred thousand dollars. And that, that's in subdivision, that, there's, it, one, we just had one just sold. And they're selling. So. On, when we try to take that rate and come to a fire rate based off of this housing increase, certain pockets of what we call clusters, they're called clusters, we can't, when we apply that rate to them, they're getting a tax break, they're not. They're, it depends on location, you've heard of real estate, location, 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 well, that, that's the way it's came out to be. And I apologize, I'm not being able to summarize, you know, an hour and a half into, into a quick conversation. But the point is this, like the taxes, the head assessor for the state of Virginia said, there's a housing shortage, there's not a business shortage, there is not a agriculture shortage of land, it's a housing shortage. And I know y'all have probably seen on Facebook or on TV, in seventy-five years of last acre, there, real estate has only went down seven years of seventy-five. So you don't want your house to go down, what you want us to do, and the board supervisors to do, is get that rate down. You, that's where the key is, get the rate down to where we can live with it, it's not a burden, but you want to keep your assessment.
Did that help you?
And if anybody wants to have that hour long conversation, come to my office and we'll go through all of these numbers, we'll open up the big books.
I mean, seriously, guys, if, if you do have any questions or anything like that, you need to, I appreciate anybody that calls and it don't matter what time or how long we're on the phone with you to kind of give you an explanation of the, yes, that's why, that's why we're here. I mean, I'm just telling you, I would encourage everybody to get an appointment with the equalization board. If you have a, a, a problem with what you've already got, when you went to the assessor's office, get ahold of the equalization board and sit down and have another meeting with them. I mean, I, I couldn't tell you the number of people that's called me, and I said, did you go get an appointment to the meeting? And I've had a couple say, well, I couldn't get in, or I couldn't get ahold of them. Listen, if it, if, if it depends on saving money, I would make a, whatever I, I could to get to a meeting to be able to get an appointment with them to get, you know, these adjusted, so we could have, you know, those numbers available. But I would encourage everybody to get an appointment with the equalization board, if you haven't already got an appointment, you didn't get satisfied with the first run, go to them and, and see how they can assist and help you, I would encourage that. Is anybody, any, anybody else, Nate, anybody, anybody on the board?
Mr. Lester.
Yes, sir.
And David made the evidence as well, I know last year we had spoken, after the year, we had spoken about the race program and a potential sponsor for that. Do we still have that in the works? It's in the budget.
Yeah, I have talked to him about three different occasions, Nate.
Eight-four.
I'm trying, I will tell you, I'm not going to promise you anything, but I am trying.
That's a hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm trying.
So that would help out as well.
Actually, we're sending out letters, I'm sending out letters to, to different people with concerns to let them know that, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing and I'm willing to take another board with, board member with me. Not only just me and the vice chairman, any board member to address any of these issues, I want to be open. I want to be, everybody says, well, transparent or open, I, I mean, this is a critical time we're in, I think we're going to get over this and get through it. I think God's going to bless us, I think we're going to get some pretty time, pretty big businesses that's going to locate here within the county, and it could be a game changer for all of us if these things happen that we're working on. I mean, you know, I'm just telling you, I don't want to promise anybody anything, but it ain't for the lack of all of us working, working together to try to make a difference in our county, so our people can have more and our teachers can have more. We all want to be competitive, we don't want to see these other counties outrun us to where we lose, and we're losing, and we're losing, and everybody's driving thirty minutes to forty minutes to, to make more money. We want everybody to come to Russell County to make their money and live here, work here, and raise their children here, and that's our goal, I will tell you that. I want to, any board members, I'll start with you.
Yes, I do, I just, may I address Mr. Lester?
Yes, you can.
Um, I just have, I just have a question, it's just curiosity. In the packet, we have S R Os that were paid, and we're fully funding, are we fully funding this at four hundred and some thousand dollars, or is this a grant that's coming from the state? Where, where's that coming from?
Yeah, that was a, that was a conversation me and JJ went through aggressively. It is, the S R Os are funded by grant, and the rest of the R S Os that are not funded by grant are paid by school. The, the, the agreement was between the school board, and that was when Dr. Brown was in place. If they wanted the additional services, they paid for the additional ones, especially at the high school where they went from one to two. So, and they had the funding in there, and it was during the COVID and the rest, and they agreed to pay for the R S R Os. So they're still paying for the S R Os, the county funded ones, they are paying, they also are paying for the ones that come through the grant.
They actually also pay for the cars and the gas.
Yeah, cars and the gas.
And whatever else they need, the fringes that they need to work on.
All the benefits, one hundred percent, only thing that we had to cover on it, and the sheriff's office also with the county, is we had to put the radios in the car and equip them with their guns and vests and their clothes. So, but the rest, they, they take care of, right, JJ?
So how long did that grant last?
Those grants, as JJ would tell you, as you, you give a set amount of time on the grants, usually it's, especially very linear right now. When one comes off, if we got five that's under grant, and it's for a three-year period, when the one drops off, we'll go back after the schools that did not have it under grant and ask for eligibility on it. It's a rolling thing that we do, so we continuously work this on with JJ. Yeah, you're welcome, man. Uh, Miss Di?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Brady?
Well, I'll just say, I'll just say, we are, it, it's a constant effort here for the last week, probably next week or so, to try to get to the point, you know, we're looking everywhere, trying to reduce these things. All of these, I, I see one category in this land use, it's under local non-taxable, that's the only category that actually dropped a little bit. It's non-taxable, so it really doesn't impact us, everything else is just to the degree to which it's been at. And as you can see, when you look at that chart, the burden is on, you know, residential families, and that's because basically, I guess, because a lot of their evaluations are due on parable sales, right?
That is correct.
And, and you know, something, you've heard about some of the sales prices, people doing it in one time for a year, offering thirty thousand dollars more than what the asking price is, that, that's, that hurts, and that's the reason some of these are up like that. But, you know, it's a good thing that our property's worth more, it's a bad thing that we're going to have to pay more to, I mean, and we, the, the, the tax isn't really going to end, it's a tax rate that's going to come down, but the net effect is that you're going to pay more on your property, you know, trying to get that down as low as we can. I'm in that forty-nine percent category, I'm in that forty-nine percent. But I can't complain, because my insurance company tells us that it's affecting more than what it's praised at, to rebuild it if something happens, so. But we are working on it, we'll continue to work on it, try to do this for you.
Mr. Di?
Yeah, I had a few questions, and, you know, Lonzo, you said for Simmons and Tate, you know, you don't have any acres, is that, is that including tool without, like a projection?
Yes.
Who, who do you think you'll have those for us before?
Well, see, based on, Tate was a, you know, a very good company to work for, they outlasted, asked for no performance agreements on it. But the, the majority of these taxes will come in, taxes not on fiscal year, I wish they were, it'd make it much easier to budget. It's on a calendar year, so they're, your first year in, like Newland, if we put something in, you know, Simmons or Alcoa or something like that, you know, I'm just elaborating, it takes it into the next following year to be assessed and, and, and go on the rolls to be able to pay. So based off of, you know, I can't talk about what's going in, businesses goes. That, but if, based off of what we're seeing and what has been obligated, you know, where I'm going with this is machine and tool will go up next year.
Okay, then I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
One thing, it's, let's see, recycling center for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, there's nothing there, and then we have a big thirty thousand, what's that?
The rec, the recycling center is our, we're required by D E Q, State of Virginia, to do recycling. We're trying to get a thirty thousand in there, in, you know, that's, at this floor. We're trying to get a bill to do plastic and, and paper, you know? You, by the State of Virginia, each locality should meet twenty-five percent recycling. Jefferson, Jefferson, he knows it, I've got to meet that, or I get, we get slapped on the hand by D E Q, so.
That's what we're looking at now.
So that's the maximum amount, now, if I can get one off gov deals, which we do, we, we do, I'm just looking at the maximum impact, so.
And I have one more question, and when you look at the industrial development authority, there is eighty thousand dollars for I D A property and legal services.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the deal with that? Because they're, they're their own entity, right?
That is, they are their own entity. Now, that line item was, it was added at the request of the I D A because of these new businesses that are coming in for legal fees. So they're, they're huge, and I mean huge, these legal fees could go in, attorney's fees of these new businesses that they are promoting.
They were not, they asked for the board supervisors to be able to assist in this. They could not carry the weight on these. These are, you know, big as, you know, Northern Grumman, so it's going to take a while. So, that is a request. That's up to the discretion of the board supervisors. And you got to remember too, not, not doing a trade-off, a tit-for-tat or status quo. They, they did, they are contributing property that behind the parole office back to the sheriff's department. Not they were calling that tit-for-tat, they're going to have.
Yeah, that's against the even, cause it gives land to town.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
We're, we're back to even. Everybody's on even playing, because we don't owe them no money.
Right. But, but the board knows what projects are coming up. Y'all know, y'all, y'all seen them since January, so that's what they're asking. Now, if they do not utilize that for that purpose, then we will, you know, we'll work that out. So, that's, that's setting in there. If these things proceed, these things come to prove, which they are moving fast, then we'll need that money. Or they will need that money.
That's all, Ms. Di. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kaiser?
I would thank everybody that came out and spoke. I wish there were more that spoke. We do want to hear what you have to say. We want to know how you feel about things and how you feel we should spend your taxpayer dollars. It's another, this is free. Another thing that the county does is free. It's all your money. So, we'd want to know how you expect us to spend that. And I've had a lot of conversations with people on the phone and text and, uh, some on Facebook. Uh, and I do appreciate everyone's input, cause it does help us get an idea of what you expect and what you want to see us do. Uh, I do think there's some areas that we've already made some progress on tonight, it sounds like. And there's potentially some more progress we can make. Every was a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand we could shave, shave off a penny.
With the new assessment, at gross, you're looking around the one-seventy range.
One-seventy. So, for every hundred and seventy's a penny off of your tax rate. So, it sounds like we've already shaved a few pennies tonight. Maybe we can shave a few more pennies. I ran on low taxes. Personally, I have no tax increase for anyone. Uh, but we do have to meet our obligations, so we're going to do everything we can to get there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Mr. Hensley?
I appreciate everybody coming out and, uh, we've talked a lot of stuff here tonight. And Lonzo's probably got tired of people that's made the last couple of weeks, but, uh, he's going to deal with it and so the rest of it. As long as he plans on staying around. But, we're, we're going to get your taxes loaded. I ain't handing up your taxes. I've talked to people, I don't know how many people I've talked to. And people's worried about your taxes. And, uh, people can only stand so much. And they ride through town, what's the three nicest things they say? Government, banks and churches. That tells you where the money's at. Now, that's plenty of stuff here we can cut. Lonzo can get, he says he's cut to the bone. I told him to cut on the bone. So, we're getting the bone saw out and we're going to set it right here today or two. Y'all great, man. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Uh, the only thing I've got tonight, I appreciate everybody for coming out and we've had some great engagement. Just always remember, you can call us if you wanted to have any discussion beyond this. One of the things I want the board to consider, I want to bring this up. I've been in conversation, uh, with Mr. Bre, Mr. Lester. Uh, is hiring a, an attorney, uh, in-house. We're, we want to run the numbers on it. They would be able to handle, uh, the IDA, us, unless we had to have some sort of special legal counsel outside of real of that. Uh, I know that school's got their own, so we, we can't, we can't go there, but because there's, there's a divide there between the school and us that would be a conflict. But other than that, I want the board to be thinking about that. Uh, we're going to run the numbers on it. We'll provide all that information to the board to see if we could save money by having somebody internally on staff. One of the reasons I'd like to do that, if it saves money, is because of a lot of these large projects that we're looking at working on, uh, to have the experience and knowledge on a daily basis and not have to bring the attorney in and, uh, have to have these discussions and catch them up to speed on all this stuff. If you had somebody there on a consistent basis to handle, uh, some of these big ticket items that would not only have the information that's required and we still might have to hire outside legal counsel on, on a couple of them, uh, that are knowledgeable in regards to some of these things. But I'm just wanting to bring that to the full board's attention. We will run the numbers on it to see what all these different departments pay. Uh, and, and if we could save money by bringing somebody in-house and having them here on a consistent basis in representing us. Uh, and we'll probably have to put that out, a notice or make a motion to have, put that out to see if we have invites on somebody that would want to do that. Uh, that might be something that we want to take up at our next meeting. Uh, just put it out there to see if we get attorneys that are willing to, you know, want to do that. Uh, I know a lot of them are in practice and some of them make considerable amounts of money, I'm sure. I don't know what they would cost us, but I think we need to examine everything. Is everybody's hearts and minds clear to know it? Okay, we need to have a, I, I want to set another meeting, uh, for Tuesday at six o'clock.
Motion to adjourn the reconvene next Tuesday at six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Got a second, Mr. Hensley? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Are you going to be voting on it that night? Or do you know yet? So, we don't call people and they show up and they're.
Well, and, and I apologize for that. I mean, we're trying to work, we're trying to work as hard as we can. We know we got to get these tax tickets out. We know we got to get them out at a certain time. Say a prayer that we find out good information.
He's standing by law. I had to post the notice, okay? But what I'll do, what I'll do is if we get to the numbers and JJ gives me that five hundred thousand dollars, I'll go ahead and set the rate.
Do what?
Yeah, it, not on reconvene. Not even reconvene. Yeah, set the rate. That, tonight was the public hearing. Yes.
Does that have to happen in the paper?
Yes.
Okay. I just noticed we had to do that two weeks before you.
Oh, I, I've had that in there. I think a month.
Everybody said I and, uh, I'm going to go ahead. Is it everybody's? Everybody good? Okay. Thank you all and I'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.